As you wish, Councilor Holsman.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I would move the county council meeting agenda for April 29th as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. And I'll deal with the minutes from our April 15th meeting. Councilor Massier?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I did review the minutes and I didn't find any errors on them, so I will move them as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Continuing on to reports, item number 5.1, audited financial statements. Good morning, Mr. Graves.
Good morning. So I'm here today to request council's approval of the 2024 audited financial statements as requirements set out by the municipal government act. So our statements are due to be submitted to municipal affairs on May 1st. So for the background, the county's auditors, MMP, have completed the audit of the 2024 financial statements. On April 22nd, 2025, Julie Oliver, senior manager, presented the audited overview and key findings to the audit committee. The audit was very thorough and provided an unqualified opinion to the audit committee. The audit consisted of some substantive testing and some reliance on tested internal controls. Areas of sample testing included revenue, expenditures, grants, deferrals, capitalization procedures, and estimation calculations. Budgeting process and actual variances were considered in the audit as well. As stated in the auditor's report, it is in their opinion the financial statements present fairly in a material, in all material respects, the financial position of Red Deer County as of December 31st, 2024, the results of its operations, changes in its net financial assets, and its cash flows for the year that ended in accordance with Canadian public sector accounting standards. So the alternatives are to reject the audited financial statements and provide further direction, approve the audited financial statements for the year ending December 31st, 2024, and the recommendation is that council approve Red Deer County's financial statements for the year ending December 31st, 2024 as presented. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions? Councilor Moore?
I just have a question. I don't have the report. I just have the council report. Are the statements available? I'm just looking at my... I logged in on the zone and I'm not, I'm not sure whether it's my computer. Are they on? Yeah, I can't get them. I, I did make a note of a question though, but I, I'm blind because I can't see.
Well, if you have a, if you have a technical issue, I mean, and you need your computer, we'll make sure that we get it working. Someone can share with you for a minute.
Maybe it's me.
You go ahead and ask your question.
So I noticed that there was 37 mil recorded in 2024. What was that made up of? I did my notes yesterday, so I really could do it. Oh, hang on. It was my fault. My apologies. I've just got it.
I couldn't go to someone else to come back to?
No, I did ask the question. I've just got to find the... You can go ahead if you...
No, if, if, I wasn't sure if you had, if you had finished your question or not, or whether you wanted to come back.
No, it was just that 37 mil that, um, that I noted. And I was just wondering what it was comprised of.
Come back to Councilor Ramsey. Councilor Kenneth. Councilor DePalm. Councilor Holsman. Councilor Massier.
No, but I still didn't quite hear the question proper from Councilor Moore. I don't, you have to restate it.
I'm not sure of it either. I, I think just I'll figure it out.
Oh, yeah, I've got it here. Was it? The tangible capital assets, it's actually 39. Just wanted to know what that was comprised of, Jeremy. It's on page, schedule one. Schedule of tangible capital assets.
Mr. Graves?
Um, through the CAO to mayor and council. So just looking at our tangible capitalized asset schedule, this schedule breaks it down by the different functional areas, or sorry, uh, asset classes. And so we see land, land improvement, buildings, engineered structures, machine and equipment, and vehicles. And so the 39 million, the largest one is 30, 37 million engineered structures. And so that's made up of our roads and bridges. That's the largest class. And then vehicles would be all the equipment that we buy. And then machine and equipment, it would be items such as, it'd be smaller pieces of equipment. Sometimes it could be office equipment, or it could be equipment for the protective services group, some of the, trying to think what the right term would be. Some of the equipment they use for the vehicle rescues. Land improvements is usually made up of things like parking lots or improvements to green spaces.
Okay. So just further to that, where would the rural connect, um, the broadband be captured, our assets? Where would that be captured? Because I was thinking that it might have been there, but doesn't sound like...
Through the CAO to mayor and council, uh, you are correct. The broadband would be in the engineered structures. So it's considered an engineered structure as well.
Okay. And would that be our asset that we transfer to the MCC?
At this point in time, um, so December 31st, 2024, the county owned all broadband assets. So, um, this is, yeah. So the 37 million is what we currently built in 2024. And so a portion of that would be the broadband internet piece. And then down below in the beginning balance of $716 million, that's where the rest of the broadband would be assets.
Sorry, down below, uh, just, I beg your pardon.
Through the CAO to, um, mayor and council. So the beginning balance for the year, if you go down the engineered structures column there, the $716 million. And then below that, you see the annual amortization and then the accumulated amortization disposal. So altogether at the end of the year, we had $747 million worth of engineered structures. And so that's a really big class for us. That's roads, bridges. And so the fiber that we have in there, um, is, is included there. And I know the book value, so that's before we depreciated. It is close to $30 million at the end of the year, fiber.
Thank you. You answered my next question. That's great. Thank you, Mr. Graves.
I'm looking for a motion. Councilor Ramsey?
Sure, Mayor Wood. I, I could certainly move that council approve the, the Red Deer County financial statements for the year ending in December 31st, 2024 as presented. Uh, it was great. We had the, the meeting with the auditor last week to go through everything.
Any further discussion? As usual, we had a nice clean audit. And I want, I just want to thank our, our financial team for the, for their hard work in preparing this audit and working with the auditors. And, and it's good to hear the auditor say that you've worked well with them. So, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. Okay. Continuing on to item number 5.2, bylaw number 1005 slash 2025 dash A, borrowing bylaw renewal.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Mr. Graves and I'll just alternate today, so he'll do the tax rate bylaw following this report. We're here today to consider amending the borrowing bylaw, establishing a revolving line of credit for a two-year term. So in April 15th, we present the request to amend the borrowing bylaw for a three-year term at 55 million, as the bylaw is set to expire in May 12th this year. During discussions, council indicated preference to reduce the term from three years down to two. And we don't need to advertise if it's that three years or less. We're recommending granting third reading to bylaw 1005 dash 2025A to amend the borrowing bylaw for a two-year term.
Thank you for your report. Questions? Councilor Kenneth? Go ahead.
Yeah, um, one of the reasons we went to the 55 million before was because we had the airport project, which is finishing up this year, where there was going to be some potential issues between being paid and paying out contractors and such. That's going to be done this year. So that, that's a pretty big amount that we don't really need to worry about. Can you explain why you, you want to continue with the 55, please?
I think through the CAO to, to mayor and council, we looked at 55 now. I think for the two-year term, we, we could proceed with like a 45 million. I think it was in year three that we would be, were a little worried about going up to the 55, but we just kept the bylaw at 55 million. It doesn't mean we're going to use it. It's just there. Similarly, last year, we didn't hit near our, what we had projected. Uh, we had better variance reports at year end, so we're just asking for that stopgap measure, uh, just in case invoices don't come in.
Thank you for that. And my understanding too, where even if we're at the 55, we're quite far under our borrowing limit, as it were, that the province allows.
Uh, through the CAO to mayor and council, yes, we're in the 90, 90 million, 92 million-ish that we could borrow.
Councilor DePalm?
Um, well, I do have a question, but I don't know if I can ask, ask it in public.
If you feel we need to go on camera, um, I, there are certain reasons we could go on camera.
Um, I guess I would prefer that because it's, I guess, to do with our finances and a statement that is made in the, the background. I have questions about.
If you want to go in camera, we have to make a motion to go on camera, but there has to be a, there has to be a reason to get there. And we can't go on camera just to discuss things that we don't want public to know about. It has to be a legal reason, right? That we're allowed to do it.
I guess, okay.
Hang on, hang on. I can't everybody's talking. If you want to speak, I'm going to get you to raise your hand.
Okay, it, it's in regards to, um, that, the cash flow chart that we were, um, sent. The graph that we were sent that said confidential on it. So I don't know that I can ask a question about that in regards to this when that part was confidential.
Mr. Dietrich?
Yeah, through the, the CAO to mayor and council, I think the, the cash flow chart showed a three-year projection. And, and of course, we're going to project very conservatively on revenues and probably maximize expenses. So we're going to be giving you the worst case scenario. And I think we projected a, a three-year chart. And, uh, uh, this year, I think is one where we are projecting not to come out of overdraft. Uh, as you're aware, we're looking at going, uh, for the next, uh, three years, uh, increasing our revenues by 5% and, and our expenditures will go up by 2%. So we have a 3% growth in terms of our operating surplus, which will eventually fund the capital. So at the end of three years, it, you know, that's where we, we max out. And so after that three years, our position will get better with each year if we continue the path. That said, council could accelerate the path, you know, we could drastically, you know, we could cut services on the operating end, and we could also cut programs on the capital end. And so, uh, that's where we're at is, we, we knew what we were getting into for the five years. And, and we have a plan moving forward. And, and council can vary that plan through taxation or service level changes.
Okay, so I guess my question on that would be, because in this, um, in the background, it says it's, uh, temporary. And, um, so is it just? I guess at what point in time in the year do we come out of that?
Mr. Graves?
Through the CAO to mayor and council, um, years, years ago, I think it would be now, like I, I think nine years I've been at the county now, so. About, um, it used to be that we would probably be about six months in and six months out of the overdraft. So, um, when taxes were collected in May and June, we'd come out of the overdraft. And we'd often make it to, um, November, December, um, before we would start to go into the overdraft. So it wasn't uncommon for us to be in the overdraft, you know, come the end of the year, like December, January, February, March, April. And then May is when we would start to collect taxes. As the tax notice goes out, we start to see the revenue go in. So that's changed a bit. And I think over the, about the last seven years, so we went through a little bit of an oil recession. Um, we also then went through the global pandemic. We started to use our reserves a lot more to fund the budget. And so our cash flow situation changed where we weren't bringing in as much cash as was going out. And so that's where we started to become more reliant on the overdraft.
Okay, so the, the temporary part is for a two, you're saying two years then? That we don't come out of that.
Through the CAO to mayor and council, so, um, what, um, Assistant CAO Dietrich had said is that we are very conservative with our cash flow. Um, we line it up with a budget that's approved by council over the three-year period. Things that affect it are timing of cash. Uh, I mentioned to council in a previous presentation about tax rates is that we can bill our full, um, tax rate out, but that doesn't mean that everybody pays it. And so when we don't have, when we have uncollected taxes, um, that we've seen a lot more of recently, that really affects our cash flow. So in the budget, we're saying we're going to get $50 million, but if we only do collect $45 million, that affects the cash flow. So it's a, there's a lot of moving parts, but you know, having that revenue come in and actually getting all the payments of our, our, um, taxes is, is a big effect. But then also ultimately bringing in more cash than we, than goes out of the bank is, is the name of the game. That's what we're trying to do.
Okay. And, and I guess going back to some of the conversation that was, um, last time about this, um, if we only did this for a year, there's no harm in looking at it again next year. It's just...
Mr.?
I think, yeah, through the CAO to, to mayor and council, I think, you know, in the past, we've always had three-year bylaws. And it seems like, uh, with this, with this council in particular, we, we have to come every year. And then every year, it's administrative time and it's administrative burden on us to do this. But, uh, you know, uh, we're looking at a two-year this time, uh, to do it. It, it, it really, we're not hampering, uh, it's not a budgetary matter. I mean, and, and future council can look at service levels and they can look at capital programs and we can make reductions on that. They can increase the taxation, you know, in terms of, you know, farmland, you know? Maybe there'll be some growth opportunities that might come up that council wishes to pursue, um, in terms of taxation. So, uh, you know, this is something that, you know, this is just a, for cash flow. And, and, and we're not asking to, to do a long-term borrowing on this.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Councilor Holsman?
The only question I had, and Councilor Kenneth had it, we are completely within our debt service limit. And this is basically just cash flow. And it's just the ebbs and recedes of when we get money in and money out. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, uh, through the CAO to mayor and council, that's correct. We're well within our debt limit. Our, actually, if you looked at the financial statements, our debt limit did increase at the end of 2024, so it's over 100 million dollars. So, yeah, we're within it here.
That was going to be my next question, because the last financial statements were even higher than the 90 million stated. Thank you.
Councilor Massier?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So we had this discussion April 15th, and we didn't pass three readings. We wanted the public maybe to have some input. It's back for the third reading today. In the last two weeks, however long it's been since April 15th, exactly two weeks, have we had any public input?
Through the CAO to mayor and council, no, no calls or emails have come into administration.
Thank you.
Councilor Moore?
And thank you. Um, just a clarification, uh, how many months are we using the overdraft a year?
Through the CAO to mayor and council, I believe for this year, we're projecting to use overdraft for the entire year. Um, we might come out of it in June, July, uh, but we've conservatively estimated that we'll be into it for the entire year this year.
Thank you.
Councilor Ramsey? For a motion? Somebody? Councilor Massier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we've all had good questions with regards to it, but I'll certainly move third reading on the bylaw. And I'll make a comment now that we have a motion on the table. This is a cash flow bylaw. And a notice in the report, we're using this cash flow bylaw to fund certain things such as capital purchases, school requisition payments, work programs. So I get it. If you are not doing long-term borrowing for our capital purchases, I get it why we're not coming out of our line of credit because we're using cash flow to do capital purchases. I really think that in the future discussions, it's going to be, let's do some long-term planning. We don't have to have this debate over lines of credit and cash flow problems. Capital purchases, it's tough to finance that stuff year to year to year when you're building a bridge for 40 years. So certainly if you people can manage to pay our capital purchases and our year-to-year budgets using our line of credit, all the power to administration. Excellent work. Fully support third reading.
Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. So I won't be supporting third reading. It concerns me that we've gone to using an overdraft for six months to six months to all year. And just because we have a debt limit of 100 million, that should not give us any comfort. It's like having a limit on your credit card. The goal is not to get there. So I really believe that this should have been a one-year bylaw so that the new council could look at this with fresh eyes. We've been assured that we don't need it next year. So, um, I'm not sure of the why. The recommendation was three. Okay, we're down to two now, but for me, this, this should have been looked at next year, so I won't be supporting third reading. Thank you.
Councilor Ramsey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wood. And, and certainly managing debt is not fun. You know, and, and we looked at debentures previously and, you know, we decided that given, uh, given what interest rates we're doing, that managing debt through the, the debenture, or sorry, through our cash flow might, might be a little bit more affordable. And, uh, that's kind of why we're in this situation we're in. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm glad we, we got this down to the, the two years instead of the three. I, I agree. You don't want to leave this too long without looking at it. But, uh, you know, I, I think two years matches up with our projections a lot better and, and, you know, can be reevaluated at that time. So I can certainly support third reading.
Councilor Kenneth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I will support third reading. I was concerned when we initially went through this that we were rushing a little bit. And I just wanted to give the public a chance. We gave them a chance. They, they see that this isn't a big concern. This is not changing how our budgets are going. This is just changing how we're paying throughout the year. And if a person looked at throughout the year, instead of if everything came in on June 30th, tax day, you know, we would be in that positive at, at that point. But, you know, purchases come at different times of the year. There's different processes that need to be, uh, taken into account. And, uh, we don't want to be sitting here, sorry, everybody, no paychecks this month because we're, uh, we're, we're out of it for now. But we do have a good plan. And as has been said before, the next council can look at this as well. So I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Councilor DePalm?
Um, just for clarification, uh, this is just for two years, right?
The motion is for two years.
Committed. Okay, um, you know, I told, I totally get it. And, um, I understand the reasoning and stuff. And I was struggling last time when I know, you know, this can be looked at every, every year. I have thought lots about this and, um, and I guess this time I could support the two years. And, you know, hopefully the following council would, uh, look at it long before then. Because I do realize that, you know, it needs to be done and it needs to be dealt with. So, um, I guess for right now, I could support the two years for this time. And hopefully the new council will look at it sooner.
Okay, Councilor Holsman?
Thank you. I, I can support, uh, this reading for two years. I, I would have preferred the three years so it doesn't hold everybody's hands. But I, I hear what others are saying about a new council coming in. Quite frankly, it's an ebb and flow situation. And if we had everything paid the minute the tax bill goes out, this wouldn't happen. And if it was paid, then it would be a lot different. But because it's not, we can't hold off on capital projects that need to be built. We have roads that need to be done. We have other issues that have to be completed. And so this is just an ebb and flow as far as I can see. And if we are within our debt limit, I can totally support it. Thank you.
Okay, I haven't spoke. A council will resume and close, but I'll speak first. And thanks, thanks, council, for, um, your various opinions on, on this. And, you know, it's, it's definitely, um, always want to make sure that we're looking at our finances and, and, and what's actually happened with the money that we owe, for sure. I just want to start out by saying that, you know, an overdraft is, is normal, normal for every business. An overdraft is normal for municipalities. In fact, my 21 years that I've been here, we've always had an overdraft. And I, I think the key thing is, I want to say, um, is that our, our administration has given us all the conservative numbers. You know, we may not need as much overdraft as, as, as is available, but it's better to be conservative than have to get to the point where, hang on, we need, we, we don't have enough to pay the bills as due. And that's the purpose of an overdraft. You know, we have a three-year budget. This is reflecting our three-year budget. This is reflecting the, the money that we've, uh, that we've, that we've asked administration to spend. This is reflecting our three-year budget, this is reflecting the the money that we've, uh, that we've that we've asked administration to spend and they've come up with a plan to identify that how they're gonna pay through it, because we know our taxes don't come in all at once. Um, they're they're spread out, we get most of them at one point in time, but, um, you know, we go through, it's like farming, you know, pretty lean streak for a while. So, I fully fully understand that, um, and I fully understand that we're that we're using this budget um, to buy capitals, capital items. And, you know, if we're able to get overdraft money at a competitive rate to borrowing at long term, which is what I'm seeing happening, then we're doing the right thing. And, um, I would have had no problem either of going of going the three years, fully understanding that council could do whatever they want. But I also understand that it takes time for administration to prepare these reports and prepare and try to think where they're gonna be into the next few years. And I would say that, you know what, we've always had award-winning budgets, fully trust the numbers that we get and I wanna congratulate our administration on those, um, but I'm definitely supporting the motion. Uh, and I would have went, as I said earlier, I'd have went the full three years, councillor Masier can close. All those in favor? Opposed? Councillor Moore opposed, remainder were in favor, the motion's been carried. Okay, continuing on, item number five point three on our agendas, uh, two thousand and twenty-five tax rate and minimum tax rate bylaw. Mr. Graves.
Thank you. So the purpose is to consider the twenty twenty-five tax rate and minimum tax rate bylaw. Council reported, uh, the county reported an increase in assessment of approximately four hundred and sixty million dollars, which represented a six and a half percent growth in assessment. This growth included new construction as a county exceeded its one and a half percent growth target in new residential and commercial development. The bylaw allows the county to collect fifty-five point five million dollars in taxation to achieve our budgeted work plans for twenty twenty-five. This is five hundred and seventy thousand more than was included in the approved budget. The bylaw will provide for a nine point nine million dollar operating surplus, which can be used to offset the use of reserves to fund the capital program. Administration notes that the county is on track with its plan to fully fund the county's capital program within three years. Administration is presenting a one point one-two-five mill rate increase to farmland properties with no increase to either the residential or non-residential mill rate. So that's a hold on the mill rates for res and non-res. The tax rates for protective services and community services will de- decrease to reflect their actual operating costs. That de- the decrease in those rates is offset by, um, the decreased rates increase the municipal rate accordingly. So again, there's no change to the total municipal levy being charged to res and non-res. Unfortunately, our requisitions have gone up eleven and a half percent, which impacts the overall tax rates that need to be levied. So the education, um, requisition from the province is increased by two and a half million dollars or twelve point five percent. We had a hold on the policing levy this year and then the seniors housing had a a small increase of twenty-four thousand dollars. It looks like a big percent, but small dollars, so overall, the requisitions went up eleven point five percent. So the impact on sample properties, overall, a home assessed at five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars will pay three hundred and thirty-four dollars more in taxes, and that's at the annual number. Of which approximately sixty percent is for municipal purposes, the other forty has to do with the requisitions. A business with an assessment of two million forty-six thousand will pay nine hundred and thirty-one dollars more in taxes annually, while a cropped quarter will pay approximately fifty-three more dollars and a pasture quarter would pay approximately twenty-two more dollars per year. Included in the bylaw is the minimum tax rate, administration is proposing to set the minimum tax levy at fifty dollars. This is intended to cover the cost of providing the combined assessment and tax notices to county property owners. This increase will affect four hundred and fifty properties, which is a hundred and forty-nine more than was affected uh, currently by the twenty-five dollar minimum tax. Communication plan. As part of the agenda, this report has been shared online, the public can watch the video stream live or through recorded video. Direction on this matter will be included in the meeting minutes that are published online and summarized in the county news and a tax insert will be included with all tax notices. The focus will be on distinguishing municipal levies versus, uh, requisitions in the tax rate. So bylaw readings, um, we are deviating a little bit from what we've done in the past, um, where we're looking for three readings today. And that has to do with, uh, postal strike, so administration is advising that it, um, that it takes approximately a week from when council approves the bylaw for us to be able to print and stuff and mail out the tax notices. We're expecting, well, there's the probability that there will be a postal strike on May twenty-second and so if we can get out ahead of that postal strike and get our notices out, that'll really help with us, uh, being able to start to collect that revenue, what we were just talking about in that cash flow in the previous report. So if we wait the two weeks, which we sort of, um, it'll just make a little bit tighter of a timeline in getting things out into the mail and deliver that. So for alternatives, um, the first alternative is to grant first and second and third reading in the twenty twenty-five tax rate and minimum tax bylaw. The second alternative is to grant first, second and third reading to the twenty-five tax rate and minimum tax rate bylaw to include the following amendments. Reducing the residential tax rate by point four seven percent, reducing the non-res rate by point eight five percent and increasing the farm rate by ten percent to achieve a hundred and eighty-six thousand more revenue than was approved in the budget. The third alternative is to grant first, second and third reading to the twenty twenty-five tax rate, minimum tax rate by law to include the following amendments. Reduce the residential rate by point four seven percent, reduce the non-res rate by point eight five percent and increase the farm rate by twenty percent to achieve a three hundred and six thousand dollars more revenue than was approved in the budget. The recommendation is that the twenty twenty-five tax law and minimum tax rate by law be given first, second and third reading, thank you.
Thank you for the report, are there any questions? Councillor Kennett.
Yeah, I wish the the minimum tax rate was sort of broken out in a separate piece, because that's kind of what I wanna talk about, um. When we discussed this even last week, there, there was a thing that I heard from others on this side of the aisle. That the twenty-five dollars that the minimum tax rate currently doesn't cover the cost of sending out the the notices and the assessment and all that, do you have bigger of what the cost actually is?
Mr. Graves.
Through the C O to mayor and council, we don't have a broken out cost like per per bill because we look at it collectively as, it's actually departments that look after this, so there's the whole assessment group and then finance looks after the cash collection piece of it, so it's two different groups. You know, when you're mailing out the bills, you got the assessment bill that's gonna be printed, generated, mailed out, that notice that goes out. And then you have the tax notice that'll be mailed, printed and sent out. And then for, on the collection side, for each bill will for sure be taking, well, we really hope to be taking a payment. So we have that process as well. So, we haven't gone to the the s- the point where we've like kind of activity-based costing to see exactly what one bill would cost, but we know collectively how much it costs. And it has been, I think twenty eleven was when we first brought in this, uh, minimum tax rate, so it's been fourteen years since we've seen an increase in that twenty-five dollars.
Okay, thank you for that, um, so one of the questions I had, if if I had a quarter of land and I had, for example, a railway right-of-way that went through and then there was a severance of a little corner of that, would that be three tax bills then? The main quarter, the railway right-of-way and that small severance, or is it only a separate tax bill when the, uh, when there is a subdivision taken out?
Mr. Dietrich.
Uh, through the C O to mayor and council, yeah, I thi- it depends on the titles, so some titles, the severance will be a part of the all a part of the the main quarter, but there are times when the severance will be, uh, on its own title and and a good example is those parcels adjacent to the Red Deer River, um, you know, the the Little Red and and some of those bigger rivers, sometimes you'll see the severances being on separate titles. But, uh, it's mainly just subdivisions, if it's subdivided and has a title, then we have a separate notice.
Okay, thank you for that. Because, yeah, uh, at the open house, I s- someone brought me a picture of theirs which had that railway right-of-way taken out and they had a another little corner severance made, but I I don't, I know they didn't have subdivided those pieces out, so. I was just wondering if that that was causing all these little pieces that we get throughout the county. I really would like an answer to my question, though, how much it costs. Because I think there's some assumptions here that it's costing more than twenty-five dollars to do these notices and I honestly would like to know if it's if it's that expensive before we're gonna double the cost, which I think is the recommendation in the report. Is there a way I could get an answer to that in a reasonable amount of time or?
Through the C O to to member candidate, no, at this point, uh, we we won't be able to generate it, we we could do it, definitely do it for, uh, you know, back, you know, we'd have to go through time sheets, we have to look at the assessment department, how long it took, how many employees they had, uh, and then and then work our backwards. The twenty-five dollars, as as Mr. Graves says, uh, we have a lot of, a lot of people involved, uh, with stuffing and mailing, so we have two separate mailouts, so. Uh, and and so that's, uh, considerable amount of time and and efforts, but, yeah, we haven't got that broken down at all, sorry.
Okay. And I think in your report, you said you were gonna make an effort to, uh, show the differentiation between the provincial portion and our portion so that people understand better that a lot of this increase that they're gonna be paying is actually coming from something that's out of our hands, is that correct?
Through the C O to mayor and council, yeah, that's correct, we wanna really illustrate the breakout of the total tax bill and what's municipal and what are requisitions that we're required to collect and been working with the communications manager to come up with, um, some good information for the public.
Perfect, thank you very much for that, I appreciate it, that's all the questions I have. Councillor Ramsey. Councillor Moore.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Graves, I just have a question on the forty, um, the four hundred and sixty million, uh, increase in assessment. Do you know roughly break down what is the the value of the new build as opposed to the increase in assessment to get to that number? I'm just curious.
Mr. Dietrich.
As Mr. Graves, uh, looks for the report, I think it was in the report, um, I'd have, we'd have to go back to, uh, the assessment department's, uh, a presentation to council, uh, regarding new growth and he's getting it now, so there you go.
Thank you.
Mr. Graves.
Through the C O to mayor and council, so I have it as percents, so in residential, um, we saw one point four three percent growth out of a total of seven point eight percent. So that means that a price appreciation or inflation was six point three seven percent.
So that was the increase in value then, the six point three?
And then on the non-residential side, we saw one point eight two percent growth. And then, uh, our price appreciation was just under two percent for non-res.
Thank you so much.
Councillor Masier.
Waiting for debate, sir.
Councillor Holsman. Councillor De Palma.
Thanks for that, I just have one question, um, uh, for the minimum tax levy, I know we, there was an option of thirty-five dollars too. I I just don't remember what the number of those properties that changed the, um, because it was two hundred and some prior, right, and then just, sorry.
Through the C O to mayor and council, let me just. So if we went the minimum tax rate at thirty-five dollars based on what we did, uh, last year for minimum tax rate, it would be three hundred and one properties would be affected instead of the four hundred and five.
Okay, and that included the the twenty-five dollar ones, right, it just moved up?
Through the C O to mayor and council, that's right, so if we were doing the twenty-five dollar one, there was two hundred and fifty-six uh, properties affected if we went to three oh one, or sorry, if we went to thirty-five dollars, there'd be three oh one, so, just a, just under fifty more property.
Thank you.
Everyone's had a chance, I'm looking for a motion. Councillor. Councillor Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor Wood, um, so, you know, given what we've discussed and went through through this process, I would like to move alternative two, uh, for first reading and that, uh, that would reduce the residential recommendation by point four seven percent and reduce the non-res by point eight five percent and keeping the farmland, uh, rate increase at ten percent and I would like to see the the minimum tax, uh, set at thirty-five dollars. You know, I, our our financial plan that we've been working through the past couple of years in indicated five percent growth over in the next few years and and we even talked about that with the previous bylaw and that that would keep us on track and, you know, th- this year, we were very fortunate to exceed that and and, you know, sure, we could take advantage of that and try to try to spin a positive that, you know, we're just holding the line, but the the unfortunate part of that is is that means a majority of our our residents are still seeing a significant increase as their assessments have gone up substantially. You know, so I I think this this alternative, um, maintains our projections and and still still would provide a little bit more with the increased, uh, farmland rate, um, than we kind of budgeted for and and this will keep us on track, but but provide our residents some relief, you know, due to the increases in in assessment and and from the province uh, substantially increasing the school requisition this year.
Councillor Moore.
Could I just have that motion repeated, please? Or could we have it up on the screen so I can just see the numbers? Option two, yeah, beg your pardon. I'm gonna pass just right now, you can come back to me, Mayor Wood, if possible, I'm just gonna give it some thought.
Councillor Masier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought of all the discussions we've been having and we're dependent on reserves and we're scared of borrowing money and doom and gloom. And I thought, you know, number one, hold taxes the same and benefit by five hundred thousand extra going into reserves. And I'm hearing from council into the future that that's what they want, less dependence on reserves and put some back and hold taxes even. And then Mr. Ramsey explained why he went with number two. And assessment's gone up more than budgeted. And so he wants to give a little bit back. And I notice we're still gonna add to reserves a hundred and eighty-six thousand more than we had projected. Mr. Ramsey, I'm gonna fully support your motion. And to end with that one, I'd like to compromise on the minimum taxes, we've been at twenty-five dollars, not too many complain, you've gotta have a charge. Yes, I hear, what does it actually cost us? It would cost us probably more to go figure that out, I'm not interested what the actual cost is, but there is a charge to administration. Going from twenty-five to fifty in one year might be aggressive. Going to thirty-five and let's see who it impacts, sure, and maybe the next council will say thirty-five's not enough, let's go to fifty. But just to do an increase, I think that was a really nice compromise going to thirty-five. I'm fully gonna support the motion on the table, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Holsman.
Counselor Holzman?
Thank you for that point, Counselor Massey. I I see the twenty-five leap to the fifty dollars, it's a lot. And uh I'd like to just keep it at thirty-five just to um maintain where we're at and the next council can take a look at it. I I wa- I too wanna thank Counselor Ramsey for his reasoning behind selection number two. Because I thought about it a lot myself and I know we want more in reserves, but it is, I think we're going into a really tough time. And just with everything that's happening lately with the cost of stuff going up and people are going to see an increase on their tax bill anyway. Because the assessment has gone up. And I know my phone has already been ringing with the big eleven point five percent. Uh education tax jump. And I think this way is a way. Can back and say to our residents, we're holding the line, we're still gonna put some money away for a rainy day. But we're not gonna take advantage of you right now when times are tough, so I will support first reading. With the amendment that it is thirty-five dollars for twenty-five. Thank you.
Good, Counselor DePalm?
Um so so I just have one question. So i- if we do uh alternative number two this year. Um how does that, is there any way it could nega- negatively impact? For next year, that if, say, the growth wasn't there and that kind of stuff? Um that we would have to say like uh move up the mill rate. Quite massively. I I'm not sure if that makes sense?
Mr. Hursburg?
Thanks. It would be very diff- uh to to Mayor and Council, um it would be very difficult to know that. Cause it is gonna be a product of what assessment growth takes place, what buildings are gonna be completed and assessed. And what inflation will look like over the next year. So the new council, though, will have the same tools this council has. They'll have the ability to. Hopefully pass a budget at Christmas time by by end for for the upcoming year and then. Uh be able to see their finalized assessment and make a calculation about their mill rate. It's the budget and the assessment changes that are driving this mill rate bylaw. It's 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 designed to follow the direction that council has already given. Uh as well as understand the impact of assessment. And it's just. Hard to say. My my guess is inflation, uh if I was to educate a guess, my guess is that inflation will be slightly less over the next twelve months. Than the past twelve months. But if tariffs go forever and and we start to have impact there, there could be an impact there and economy. Is gonna be the issue when it comes to the other portion of our increases, which is when people build. And we're seeing some some positive signs that there's some folks out there interested in in doing some builds in the county. But that'd be pretty significant to overall change our entire assessment role. It's a big assessment role. So I I'd say it's it's gonna be similar to this uh next year, but maybe a little less uh inflation if things eventually settle down south of us. I think, and so, yeah, it's it's really hard to predict any more than that, uh but but. Takes all this in the fact that the the new council will have the same tools and the same opportunities to set their budget, then then look at. Uh what that's gonna mean for all of these things, including the bylaws that we've had for short-term debt versus long-term debt. Those are options they'll have with with hopefully sufficient data to to make their decision in a year's time.
Okay, I just didn't want it, if we did it this year, to have me back next year, kind of. So that those were just my thoughts. Okay, thanks for that explanation as well.
Also, Kenneth? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, I'm gonna support the the motion. Uh on this uh that's been presented, if Counselor Ramsey hadn't amended the uh minimum tax. I was going to amend it to thirty-five myself, cause uh, yeah, we need to cover costs and whatnot, but uh to double it. Uh that's, I didn't see the justification presented for that. Um and as uh the C A O has stated. Um assessment may be changing by the province here coming up too, so we, it's hard to crystal ball something that. Could be changed from our uh our elected officials above us. Um but yeah, this this makes sense, you know, uh everybody knows that it's been pretty heavy inflation the last few years here. Hopefully, we're gonna be into a lower inflation period. Um and hopefully, that'll drive some. Economic development in our county as well um to help uh because. More businesses, more families, more houses and whatnot, that helps everyone out without increasing. Uh each person's individual tax bill, which is very important that we uh. We stay competitive with the neighbors as well, cause uh our neighbors. Some of them have some very good advantages that we don't have, but I I think on the horizon, there's some good things coming to Red Deer County, so. I'm more than happy to support this uh this bill and I guess I'd call it, or this motion and. This amendment uh as presented. Thank you. Hey, thanks. Um everyone's had a chance. I haven't ma- I haven't made it all the way around. Who made the motion? Oh, you passed earlier. I knew something happened. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Wood. So yes, um I am I'm happy to support uh Counselor Ramsey's motion. You know, I think it really is a nod to um to our residents right now. Um. Times are tough and they're paying on the assessments. The values of our homes and our businesses have gone up. And so I think, you know, this is a a little bit of a a help. Um I did have a concern about uh that Counselor DePalm shared about, you know, are we delaying something, but. I think with um, you know, the prospect of inflation coming down, um we we don't have a crystal ball, but. Um I think we need to brace ourselves for what is coming. Uh I think it's really important in our communications. That uh we explain to our residents the the charges that are out of our control. And uh I think we do a pretty good job of that, um but I think this year is more important than ever because there was such a a big increase. Um especially with the education, the education portion. So I look forward to some clear um. Communication on that. Um yeah, because uh, you know, we need to let our people know that. That we we are, we're faced with with situations that we we, even though we we talk about it and we lobby, it doesn't really. Seem to change what happens. So, thank you.
Okay, so the motion was Counselor Ramsey's. Um I'll speak and Counselor Ramsey will have opportunity to close and. I'm hearing council saying that they um want to collect a little less taxes from our from our folks this year. Concerned over concerned over some of the rate increases that have came, have been given to us from especially the education side. Um and that, uh you know, it's a tough time. And uh I fully hear where you're where you're at. Yeah, it's um, you know, you take a look look today and we, you know, we're running out, we're running an overdraft and we're trying to figure out um. Where we're gonna be in the future and wanna make sure we can maintain where we're at. I know our reserves are significantly down and. They've came down for quite a while. And each and every year, we always have tough times. It's always tough times. I don't know how tough it's gonna get, but it's always tough times and I'm trying to take a look at at the three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Um that we were looking at, the potential increase, and of course, we're, this this um this number two will actually reduce that. Um but that three thirty-five, that's less than a dollar a day. Three thirty-five is twenty-eight bucks a month. This is gonna be less now, if we go with this one. I I I just wanna always think into the future. Make sure that we have enough money into the future that we could put a little bit away. Last year, we had a couple major items come to us. Spent. Half a million dollars plus on an audit. Last year, we spent. Half a million dollars on on Western, cause they needed it. They weren't in our budget. We were lucky, actually, last year that we put, that we collected quite a bit of extra tax. We actually put it up a little bit, or we'd been in trouble. And I'm just trying to look forward, folks. Um no one likes to pay taxes, neither do I. Farm farm land taxes are going up significantly and that's. That's good, it's needed. Um but. I think that we're very competitive. I just wanna say right now, what, doesn't matter which one of these we pick, one, two, or three. We are very, very competitive as far as our taxes compared to our neighbors and the services that we provide. You know, I was talking to some folks this morning at the at the at the breakfast. And, you know, some of them from, well, multiple areas. One one lady was from Poplar Ridge as I was leaving, is is extremely happy. With the services that we're providing and where we're at. Ask, is there, is there anything? No. We cannot continue to overlook. Our reserve position. We have to continue to build it. I wish we would continue to build it. We will build it a little bit. A little bit this year. Um I I wanted number one. I'm not gonna vote against it. I'm not gonna vote against this. I mean, it would be silly if I did. But I'm telling you right now, I wanted number one, okay? Counselor Ramsey, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wood, and I appreciate everyone's comments. Um and and I agree, you know, it it. Could be a bit of a risk. You know, you don't wanna get to Counselor Palm's point in in the the position where you're having to make. Major jumps the next year, cause you did something drastic one year and 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 that's kind of the approach I had to this, but. When when you see the the amount of growth we had, that, you know, like I say, we we were planning for five percent growth, one and a half. To to come from increased assessment and and new builds and then three and a half from from tax increase and and to totally surpass that. By by over a percent. You know, I'm I'm quite confident in this that uh. You know, this this will help our residents. I've I've heard from a few where their their assessment has gone up more this year than any year prior. Um and and like I say, holding holding the line on taxation just just actually still kind of hits them, so. To to me, this is this is much more fair to our rate pairs, meets our projections and and I I totally agree with the the minimum tax portion to. Uh you know, we just can't get in this habit of doubling uh fees and costs. Um we we've seen it in other areas where now it's coming back on us a little bit, and so I I think we need to take a a more cautious approach. When we look at increasing those types of things, so.
Hey, we've had good debate. We all know the motion. It's number two in the on the screen. Plu- uh mu- plus thirty-five dollars, correct? Thirty-five dollars change, that'll be the other one. We're all clear on it? All those in favor? Okay, first reading has been passed. Counselor Holzman?
I would move second reading to the bylaw.
Any further discussion? Counselor Massey?
Yeah, for further discussion on it. Good, I'm glad we got first reading. And I've sat in this chair for a lot of years and this is the first time we've actually been able to lower the mill rate. I've always sat here and said, no, we don't need to increase mill rates every year if assessment's going up. And assessment's going up. We need increased taxes and we have to be less dependent on reserves. Here, we're giving back to reserves. A little bit more than budgeted for, so that's one objective made. And assessment's gone up so far, we can actually lower mill rate and still increase taxes that people are paying. So I think this is well thought out. And this other thing is about while we get unknown costs that we have to be prepared for. May future councils never have to deal with a half a million dollar audit again. I mean, that's a silliness that we paid in the past and we've learned from it. May future councils never do that silliness again. So I have the full confidence that the progression of Red Deer County will continue to maintain. Good budgets with mill rate set where they're at today.
Counselor Moore?
Um yeah, I I support second reading. Uh lots been said. I I think we've landed in a good place today. I think um. You know, people are gonna get a bigger tax bill because of the assessment and we're we're lucky. That our our values have gone up. We're very, very fortunate that we live where we do. So, you know, um. I'm happy we were able to to acknowledge that, that, yeah, the reality is a a large bill. I've I've had a few calls. You know, their assessments and has has property gone up that much around here? So I uh, yeah, I I think we've landed in a good place for this year and uh. Let's hope it won't um, it won't come back to haunt us in the future. And I I take the comments that Mayor Wood made, cause I think it's very. Um you know, it's, it this is tough. We don't know what's in the future, but right now, I think um. It's an acknowledgement of the economic realities out there and uh the bills do get higher each year regardless.
Counselor Ramsey? Will they go right way around? Counselor Kenneth, Counselor DePalm, Counselor Holzman? Okay, all those in, all those in favor, second reading? Careed unanimously. Counselor Massey?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's not very often and I think. Usually we send this out to the public to get any feedback, just in case we're making a big mistake. But you know, I don't like that necessarily excuse that there's a postal strike coming in a few weeks. It's too bad. The other levels of government and those things affect what we're doing for the rate pair. This year, I have the confidence. That as an elected official, we can set mill rates and set tax rates and get the bills out in a timely fashion in case of a postal strike. Cause it wasn't that long when we had a postal strike and it did disrupt day-to-day operations of our people. But since we're lowering taxes, I don't think we'd go out to the people. I really don't think the people are gonna phone and say, geez, that's a mistake lowering taxes. We're adding to the budget. I think if anything, the phone's gonna ring and say, thank, thank you. So I I'm gonna move, let's do third reading today, Mr. Mayor.
Through the C A O to council, so we need a resolution to proceed to third.
All those in favor of third reading at this time? It's unanimous?
So, yes, I mean, you know, typically, you know, I wouldn't support three readings at once, but I think this is good news today. And I I think uh uh that it it's sort of an anomaly, uh it's different. Um and uh, you know, we are dependent on uh Canada Post and, yeah, that strike. Looks very, very possible. I'm one who works there. So um, yeah, I think just to get things, you know, but our. Our bills out there and and I think this is the way to go today and it isn't my typical. Um it's not something I typically support, but because of the good news and the reality we're facing with our postal service. So I uh happy to support third reading at this time.
Any discussion? Counselor Kenneth? Yeah, um I support third reading for this exact same reason. Uh we put enough stress. Stress on all the staff at the county to sharpen their pencils and uh do everything that we ask them to do and. Do it at at a reasonable uh budget and whatnot and. I don't think in my area for sure. I know people will be happy that their tax bill is up, but will be happy that. The the tax rate is down. That's that's a really good news story that uh that we have here. And quite frankly, it's because of the staff in the county, across the county, all the uh. The contractors and everything else that we're able to do this, so. They're making us look good today for once and uh, I wouldn't say for once. That slipped out, sorry. They're making us look good and uh, you know, it's. It's really appreciated on this side of the fence that we can uh, we can do this decrease. I think uh it was alluded to earlier. That this, it's been many years since there was a tax decrease and uh I'm just grateful that we were able to do this this day. Thank you. Anyone else?
May I ask a question of staff? Have have we thought about ever emailing instead? Because then we wouldn't be subjected to. Would that be a possibility or is it in the law?
I think it's through to council. It's a tough question in a way. I I don't think we're in the legal situation where that could be. And handled one hundred percent. I think, though, as a tool, it could do a lot to reduce. Um the amount of paperwork in the shuffle and and what what it takes to sort of push that paper out there. But I don't think we're in a legal position where we could dictate it. So all it takes is a couple not to be using it and then. Uh it does reduce your risk, of course, if there's fewer involved. Uh but over time, there has been a lot more electronic transaction. Uh I just don't think we're there yet where we could completely rely on it.
Counselor Holzman?
I I just wanted to thank all the staff involved in today and I concur with all the statements that have been made. This is a good day. We. We still are gonna get our taxes, tax line met and I can totally support the the third reading. I I too. I, I too agree that we normally go out to the public, but in this situation, we're sort of stuck. So kudos to everybody that we got to today, and, um, thanks, and let's get this passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before, I'll speak before Councilor Moore closes, if she chooses. I haven't said anything on this one yet. I, I want to, I want to thank administration too. We know, we know how, how hard that you've worked, not just on this one, on the budget, all the way through. But I think the key thing, the key thing is, is today is that our folks are going to see a tax increase. They will. Because, because it's there. Um, and I was, I was advocating for a larger one. And I'm not scared to say that. I think the key thing is though, is that we, is communication, as was mentioned earlier. A lot of this increase is not from us. It is, it is from the school side of things. And I know we've always done a good job to try to communicate that. Um, but definitely, I want to say that people live in Red Deer County for multiple reasons. Not just live here, they have businesses here and they continue to grow here. We have consistently, over a long period of time, tried to keep our taxes as low as possible. And that's, that's, that's for growth. And that, and that's a good objective to have. Um, I just, you know, we just have to always be mindful, very, very mindful that we're, um, that we're able to continue to, um, see our finances and our, and our reserves. I'd like to see those reserves built. I will have no more say on it after today. Someone else is going to be doing it next time. Um, and hopefully, hopefully they continue to be mindful as well. All those, oh, you close. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, we'll call it, we're going to call a break. Um, and we'll come back and, we'll come back in, how many, what, ten minutes? Eleven fifty, eleven fifty-one? Ten fifty-one? Ten forty-one?
You just about said a good one on an election year.
The time is ten fifty-one. I'd like to call Red Deer County back to order. The next item on our agenda is five point four, the two thousand and twenty-five budget variance report as of March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Dietrich.
Thank you. We're just waiting for the presentation to come up and... So we're here today to discuss the Q one variance. So you'll find that your package included the operating and capital plan variance for the first quarter of the year. Just note, the spring budget amendment was passed in April, so obviously this report doesn't reflect anything that was done at spring budget amendment. So as of March thirty-first, we're utilizing twenty-three million of our fifty-five million line of credit, and you'll see that we make comparisons, you know, so you're expecting to be twenty-five percent if you went through the budget, but of course you know that our expenses mostly occur after Q one. Operating revenue, we'd love to just address a couple things today. Just, Mr. Manager Graves talked about cash flow this morning, and, you know, just because you levy taxes doesn't mean they're going to pay him. Just to update council, you know, we're at four point nine million in owed taxes from oil and gas. As you're aware, we're proactively writing off oil to the tune of one million dollars a year. So it's literally like a program budget now as we're going to be doing that, and it's going to be so that we're not going to be putting money, you know, receivables on our books, you know, hey, we're going to collect twelve million dollars in taxes. We're never going to collect some of that taxes. So just for your awareness, we have now thirty-seven oil and gas, thirty-seven oil and gas companies not paying taxes. So we had one more company has stopped paying taxes, which is quite unfortunate. So yeah, four point nine million as of March thirty-first. Now, last year we had some angst on the sales, land sales and user charges, and so we broke it out into four different items now, and you'll see that you have government cost recovery as one line item, land sales for development as another, sales user charges and other receivable or other agreements, and then waste management services. So that should help a little bit in terms of explanations. So the utility one, you'll see it only eight, or waste management one is at eight percent, and that's a lagging feature, but it's actually one that we want to highlight because Hornhill and our solid waste collection is starting to bleed money worse than it used to bleed money, and that'll be a discussion item for a future council, so that we'll need to address that. More people are recycling, which is wonderful, and it's a good thing, but unfortunately, we need garbage across the scales to make money, and we're not getting it. It's being diverted before it gets to the scales. So that's an item that future council will have to deal with. And lastly, we just want to highlight our franchise fees looking good, thirty-seven percent. Gas Lane Alley growth is really awesome, and there, of that forty-three thousand, twenty-seven thousand was from Gas Lane Alley and sixteen for Spring Brook. So Gas Lane Alley is projecting now, we're looking, we'll probably have a hundred thousand a year coming in from franchise fees. It can start, you know, pretty soon. We're starting, we're putting holding into a general reserve, and at some point we will have a decent amount, a little nest egg, and then the hundred thousand could support a debenture for, let's say, a fire hall, or a debenture for a field house. I don't know, just putting it out there, but at least we're planning for the future in those. And Spring Brook at sixteen thousand for the quarter, that's not bad either, sixty-four thousand, you know, could do some operating stuff with that. So on the operating expense side, we're at seventeen percent. General governance, just risk management, we paid seventy-five percent of our insurance premiums. That threw it out of whack there. Everything else is more or less on track there. Capital budget, not much to report, other than the amortization, but the cost recovery projects, we have a number of them, Junction Forty-two rest area expansion, Roundabout, Leva and Laura expansion, and Airport Drive, those are all cost recovery projects. So we're only at, you know, three percent completion. With that, they're not really indicative too much, but I can tell you we're on track, and that said, we're looking to report some more wholesome numbers at the end of Q two. So we're alternatives, we're recommending acceptance of the March thirty-first. Oh, did I? There weren't a ton of notes. It's early in the year. Yeah. That's it. No, no, and operation services, we're now reporting ag services by a program, by program, so that we used to report it all lump sum, and now we have like, that's, you know, ten or eleven different reports. And planning and development is, has an expense of just the cost recovery information. And bad net, bad debts, we've only got five hundred and seventy-six dollars in collections. And the cool thing is, we have not used contingency, and Mr. Campbell, none of his roads blew up in spring, so we're hoping we can survive Father's Day and the June rains. So we'll see how that goes, but at this point, you know, looking pretty good. And we have a small loss on a sale of, auction of an older Chevy Tahoe by Patrol, and that's understandable. The Patrol vehicles are high mileage vehicles, so we don't sometimes achieve what an ops vehicle would do at auction. Sorry, just recommending that council accept the variance report of March thirty-first as information.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions? Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Thanks for the report, Director Dietrich. Just a couple of questions. The twenty-three million, is that the most we use, or when will that reach its peak before it kind of evens out, or is there a pattern?
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council, I believe, and I don't have the cash flow projection in front of me, Mr. Graves, but I think we will top out at just around forty-two million this year is what we're projecting, and that'll be sometime in Q two.
Q two forty-two, okay. Oh, that rhymes. My second question is, have we found insurance has gone up? Because I've heard, you know, insurance costs are going up, and I know personally and our business, we've noticed, is that impacting the county at all?
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council, yeah, it has. And CAO Hersberg and I were at a conference last year where the RMA executive director just said, we're becoming almost uninsurable in Alberta, and you look at Jasper, the RMA insurance uncovered, had some losses in Jasper, and, and yeah, basically you have to almost self-insure. That said, RMA has the, I think, the biggest fleet of vehicles that is insured in Canada for municipal governments. So we're doing as well as we can, but it's, and it's only because of the RMA. If we had to go to the private, I think we'd be in trouble.
Yes, we're lucky they're so competitive. And my final question is on the unpaid oil company taxes. I know at the RMA conference convention in March, there was quite a heated ministerial forum with Mr. Jean, Minister Jean, talking about what municipalities are doing. And RMA actually announced a committee that is going to help the provincial government understand our plight, and is there any news on that?
Mr. Hersberg.
And that particular committee, I don't think I've seen anything since then. I would point out that the mature assets reports have just come out, I think, today in regards to some of these wells that are probably the most likely candidate to not be paying their taxes, and there seems to be quite a gap between where the province and the industry feels taxation is versus where local government's actually at. And your president was quite vocal and quite pointed in her, in her response to that, and the RMA has put a report out. I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but a report has come out somewhat counter to where the mature assets report was going to help. They feel better reflect where the municipalities are at in this situation. I think we're, they're being, we're being villainized, is that a word, a little bit, putting a little bit of a black hat on municipalities, and I think that's an unfair piece. So it is not exactly the answer to your question, but it is the most recent piece of the puzzle, because that ability to enforce your taxes is really, it boils down to having to at times justify that you need these taxes to support the infrastructure that so much of the province's GDP relies on in order to be a prosperous province.
Counselor Messer.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I've got a few questions myself, but they're all around the same topic. I just want to try and get a little better handle on it. You're telling me right now in this report that we've got about five point nine million, just about six million in outstanding taxes that weren't paid from last year, and four and a half for pipeline. So what's the other one and a half? Is that collectible? Is that residential and commercial and collectible through the penalty system?
Mr. Dietrich.
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council, yes, it's collectible. You know, it's land, and it could be commercial, could be residential, even sometimes it's farmland, and even though, even though it's not big, it's still farmland. I know that some of the, I did have a disappointed rate pair this year that was, you know, we put a tax notice on his land. He says, well, my land, my quarter's worth a million bucks, and you're going to put a tax notice on for two thousand dollars. I said, yeah, well, you haven't paid taxes in four years. What am I, that's the only tool I have. So, but yeah, definitely the land. And that's the thing, like, we always can sell a shop in Gas Lane Alley, and the bank, most of the time the banks will step in for a shop or a house. Every once in a while, on a manufactured home, we do take over. I think we took over one in Ardley last year, we sold it, and I think there's one that'll go up for auction in Waskesia Estates as well this year, so.
And we're penalizing them six percent, whether it's yearly or six percent every six months, and there's penalties involved, and you get some money. Because further on in your report, you said you collected a half a million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand in bad debt collection. Now, that money you collected, was that pipeline stuff that you managed to get back, or is that the collection that you made from these collectible ones? Or is it a bunch of some of each?
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council, I think it was only five hundred and thirty-six dollars. I don't see.
It was only a thousand, it's just five hundred and seventy-six dollars?
No, no, yeah, it's not much, we don't have much right now, yeah. Hold on, let me, which, which line, Mr. Graves?
You're right, it is no zeros, no K behind that, it's just five hundred bucks. Then the question's irrelevant, because that means you're not collecting very much of the non-collectibles. I do like, I have the million and a half collectible. I don't like the system, but you will foreclose, you'll put a for sale sign on it, and all of a sudden, somebody comes and pays. My last question, Mr. Mayor. It becomes public information on that bulletin board out there that my farm's for sale through the tax collection process, and I only get a year or two. Now, I don't know if you list my name, but you certainly list my property. We talk about the oil companies, and you mentioned thirty-four of them that aren't paying, or thirty-seven, every new number you came. Is that not public information, what those names of those companies are? Because I have oil companies on my land, and I'm curious if they're in trouble or not. Am I going to get my surface rate payment or not? So I guess my question is, if you list on that bulletin board out front, the collectible ones that you're going to sell their shop, they're going to sell their farm, you're going to sell their house, is it not fair then, the oil company ones are also public information, which ones aren't paying taxes?
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council, that's a good, good point. My FOIP expert isn't here today. That said, we do report to the province. Obviously, the province knows who isn't paying. So I know Minister Jean, he knows darn well who is paying and isn't paying, and he knows how much they're not paying. That said, we will report to, we'll ask our FOIP coordinator, and we'll report back through the CAO's office and to council if we can post the bad books of those thirty-seven companies.
I look forward to that information, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Counselor Holsman. Counselor Bennett.
Yeah, thanks. And sort of a follow-up to what you just talked about there on those thirty-seven companies. Minister Jean, he sort of alluded that he wasn't getting the information. So you're, you're reporting directly to the Energy Minister, too, who's, who's our bad players? He, he was talking about, like, even thirty days late, and he wants you to let him know, sort of thing. Is that, is that what it is, or in practicality, it's a little longer than that?
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council, every quarter, like, we do it literally the first week, like, April, or, you know, first of April, we report to the Minister of Municipal Affairs. So that's, and so I don't know how their communication goes in the provincial government, but we report to Municipal Affairs. So Minister MacIver definitely knows, and, but we don't report to every minister, just, we report to the minister that we're responsible to.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, I think it would be helpful if, if it is allowed to post those companies out there. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey.
Yeah, I know, I guess further to that topic, you know, the, the gas tax holiday ended this year. Are, are we, is the increase in companies a result of that, and are we going to see a jump in our bad debt because of that? Now, now that tax can be issued, but maybe they won't pay it.
Through, through the CAO to Mayor and Council, too early to say. We do know Parallax, formerly Vesta, you know, they make, our new, our oil companies like Parallax or Vesta put a significant amount of investment in. They're not going to open up, you know, a six, a six pad, or six well pad, and then shut her down at year four. I think it's mostly in the newer shallow gas municipalities like Vermillion River, Bonneville, St. Paul, where you see them, you know, shutting in wells. That said, that is a good question, and that's something our assessment team will be monitoring to see how that is. But we had actually a bump this year because of the holiday. Vesta had a considerable tax increase this year, and which was very grateful, given our budget situation.
Okay, we're looking for, looking for a motion. Counselor Bennett.
Yeah, I'd move we accept the two thousand and twenty-five budget variance report as of March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five as for information.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's carried unanimously? Okay, school to development applications and reports, item number six point one, Red Deer County Land Use Bylaw number two thousand and twenty-two slash twenty-six text amendment.
Good morning.
Good morning. This app, or this report is to present and consider granting first reading to bylaw number one zero zero two slash two thousand and twenty-five dash B, a bylaw to amend the land use bylaw, which would amend part thirty-six, schedule A, the gravel extraction overlay district, and also to set a public hearing date for June seventeenth. So the gravel extraction overlay district has been part of the land use bylaw since two thousand and sixteen, and at that time, the intent was to add the overlay to address a variety of issues regarding the aggregate extraction and aggregate processing land uses. As you know, we have been working through the overlay district and reviewing it as part of council's two thousand and twenty-four strategic priorities, which brings us to today in presenting first reading amendments. So just to go through some of the amendments that we're proposing today, the first one is a change to the setbacks from existing dwellings, so an increase of the minimum requirement from one sixty-five to three hundred meters. The remainder of that section would stay the same, so the shorter setback may be considered if both parties agree to a lesser setback from the pit operation. So just increasing the, the distance from the foundation of the adjacent dwelling. The second amendment is adding additional dust control measures. So in addition to requiring dust control, the operator is responsible to perform additional dust control measures, specifically by using water to dampen the road's surface. And then there are circumstances that have been listed on when that water dampening would be required, and the gravel operator is responsible for supplying the water and for all costs associated with that additional dust control. The third amendment is a new section to the overlay district, which is the preparation of a hydrology assessment to the satisfaction of the county and Alberta Environment and Protected Areas. So that report would be submitted, and we would have Alberta Environment take a look at it to ensure that it is acceptable. The next new section is screening requirements. So screening of a gravel extraction operation shall be required when the use or enjoyment of neighboring parcels may be impacted. And so we've put some parameters on what that screening could potentially look like. So abutting residential districts in regards to solid fences, hedges, landscape berms, or other means where residential property has a sightline to the pit. So they would work, the proponent of the gravel operation would work with administration on what that screening requirement looks like to determine the best appropriate screening, where a berm would work, a fence may not, or vice versa. And so I think those have to be fluid in regards to the specific pit operation. And then also additional screening if it's visible from a public roadway. And again, potentially that landscaping feature or a buffer strip, which would screen the pit from a roadway. And then the final new section is about public consultation. So requiring the applicant to complete public consultation prior to submitting an application for the overlay district. In doing that, there's a variety of things that we've added to that section, which have been taken from municipal best practices, as well as other processes such as notification processes through the Alberta Energy Regular, Regulator, and coming up with these regulations on exactly what the proponent needs to do as part of their public consultation. So that includes mailing a notice to all landowners within one point six kilometers of the proposed pit, and what they need to include in that notice, as well as hosting a minimum of one in-person open house. And again, what the package needs to include when they send that notification out to the landowners, inviting them to the open house. And then at the close of the consultation, preparing a public consultation summary that's provided as part of their overlay district application to come to council. As part of these proposed amendments, we will refer to internal and external agencies, as well as post them online, and the county news, and the date of the public hearing for the public to attend and provide their comments to council. So we are recommending that you grant first reading to bylaw one zero zero two slash two thousand and twenty-five dash B to amend the land use bylaw and set a public hearing date for June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions? Counselor Masser.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, looking forward to first reading, and an excellent report, and I like the fluid in a lot of them. I'm wondering about three point one, hydrology assessment, you use the word may be required if warranted, and you talk about a distance. Now, is that distance just with regards to how close a nearby water well may be, or is that distance with regards to surface and, I guess it wouldn't be groundwater, but what if there was a surface water? And again, how big is that surface water when it's classified? But I'll just stop my questions in the first one. Is that just with regards to waters within one point six kilometers? Or is the one point six kilometer, sorry, I'll stop my question at the first one.
Thank you. Through the CAO to Mayor and Council. So it would be dependent on what we hear through the consultation, where the location of the pit is. That's why we use the word may instead of shall, because we aren't certain that in every instance, a hydrology assessment would be required. If you use the word shall, then every proponent of a pit would have to submit a hydrology assessment. So I think we need to look at it holistically when the pit application comes in to come into the overlay district and work with the professionals on whether that hydrology assessment would or would not be required based on the circumstances.
I appreciate that clarification after the consultation, and also that consultation would include Alberta Environment Protected Areas input as well, would it?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Moore.
So I have a couple of questions, and just building on what Counselor Massie talked about the change in shall and may. Could we put, still put shall and then put when appropriate? Or, because there is a different meaning in may and shall, I'm just going to say that as a, would that, would that, would that affect anything?
Mr. Hersberg.
I think if you had the wording you're talking about, it still becomes a may. If it's a shall, there's, there's no debate about it. So in the wording that you describe, really that is also a may. So we could check with legal on that, but honestly, it's, it's, it's important that the wording's understood as it is. And if you said it shall, subject to, then it doesn't become shall, and then it does become a may.
Yeah, I'll think about that one, yeah. Thank you. So someone asked me a question last week about, do our public know, once first reading is passed, that they cannot speak to council? And how is that, is that communicated to our public?
Ms.?
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council, that would be your process. It's not necessarily something that we would communicate to residents, but we will send out a public notice, letting them know when the public hearing date is. We'll accept any feedback, comments, whether they're verbal, phone call, send-in, and we'll include that in the public hearing report package. Thank you.
I'm going to answer back a little bit, just as mayor, because I see this no different than, than any other public hearing that we would have. It would be treated the exact same way. Once we've passed first reading, then it is our ownest to keep an open mind and be able to hear from everyone at that hearing before we would make our own decision. And so I, I, you know, as mayor, I see this no different than any other public hearing we would have.
And I'm talking about the public hearing process, as you say, for all. I just, because it was a comment that came to me, that did people know that? Maybe that's another conversation. So the comments that we heard from the public consultation, they will be included in the public hearing package, just confirming that, because I've also been asked that question.
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council, yes. We didn't include them as part of this because it is just first reading, but as a comprehensive review of the public consultation, they will be provided as part of that package, as well as any additional comments that we receive through the public hearing process.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor Ramsey? No?
Yeah, I had the same question on the, the public engagement pieces being included in that next agenda package.
Counselor Bennett.
Yeah, just a question on the hydrology assessment. If it is required on an application at that point, does it stop until that's been approved by Alberta Environment, once, like, they've sent? Once like they've sent their report to them? And then do we, is the way it's written, we wait until that can, comes back from Alberta Environment saying yea or nay?
Through the CAO to Mayor and Council, yes, we would wait for any comments back to ensure that there was compliance or if there were any concerns that those could be addressed prior to putting it into the overlay district.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor DePaul.
Thanks for all the stuff that you guys did on this. So one question, I, I think I know my own answer, but people can come to the public hearing and present new information, right? If they so choose, right? They're not limited. Okay, because I was asked that and I'm like, yeah, I'm so, okay, great. Thanks.
Counselor Holsman. Where do we start here? We started with Counselor Massier. I'm looking for, we're looking for first reading today. I'm looking for a motion. Counselor DePaul.
I would move first reading to bylaw number 102 slash 2025 dash B and set the public hearing date for June 17th, 2025.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. So I, I support first reading today of this. I think, thanks to staff, it's been a lot of work gone into this and it was definitely something on council's radar. We, we've seen the suggested amendments in front of us and I look forward to the public hearing and encourage anyone who feels or wishes to share their experience, information, opinion with council. I look forward to seeing them on June 17th.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? It's carried unanimously. Okay, we need one more motion. Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn at 11:21.
All those in favor? It's carried unanimously. Okay, so we've got a, we've got a GPC.